The Aurora City Council Meeting, February 12, 2019, is hereby called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Bowman.
Here.
Alderman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Denal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville. Alderman Hartburns. Alderman Mervine.
Here.
Alderman Buzz.
Here.
Alderman Lauchey.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins.
Here.
Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
Eleven present.
Please rise, we have a moment of silence in honor of our active service men and service women, as well as our veterans. Please remain standing as we say the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led today by Cub Scout Pack 712, hailing from the 10th Ward. The Pledge of Allegiance will be followed by Alderman Hartburn's introduction of Elder David Smith of Mount Olive Church, who will provide the invocation. A moment of silence. Thank you. Pack members, you want to step up a little closer and point toward the flag, and you can start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance. We're ready when you are.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, gentlemen.
Elder David E. Smith is a man that don't need an introduction. He has been trailblazing the Aurora community most of his life. He came up here from Louisiana many years ago, raised his family. He also was a foster parent of over fifty children. He has worked tirelessly in this community. He loves Aurora, and guess what, y'all? Aurora loves him back. He has done a phenomenal job at the Great Mount Olive Church of God and Christ, on the Bishop's Vine, who has assisted for numerous years, and when his son became a pastor, he went to help his son. But he is still a member of the Grand Mount of Church of God and Christ. He loves Aurora. Would you please receive none other than Elder David E. Smith, who give our invocation.
This season, I'll father you. Thank you for your goodness and your kindness. Thank you for this another day. Back to the blessings. The members of our city council, our mayor, and our great city, all those that care and love, grant you now that you give us grace and mercy and peace, in the name of your son, Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Elder Smith. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, January 22, 2019? City Council Meeting moved by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of a sergeant-at-arm? A sergeant-at-arms for this meeting. Motion was made by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Mr. Muhammad, you want to start with our presentations?
Definitely. Good evening, everyone. We are honored, tonight, as you heard, to have Pack 712 with us, from the 10th Ward. Thank you, gentlemen, for not only being here tonight, but for also serving the community of Aurora, serving your schools through your pack. We appreciate you. We're going to ask our Alderman of the 10th Ward, Alderman Lauchey, and the mayor to come down. We have a special presentation for the pack. Gentlemen, we're going to call your names, one by one, but this is a presentation from the mayor, called the Mayor's Commendation Award for Service and the Mayor's Medal of Excellence. We hear, not only do you work hard in the community, but you work extremely hard at school and keep those grades up as well. So we thank you for that. Let's give them all a round of applause, if you stand. There are two that couldn't make it tonight, but you five will represent. Come on down, Diego Alvarez. Let's give Diego a round of applause. Aiden Arredondo. You can stay up, Diego. Everett Johnson. David Mersham. Nate Moore. Will Perry. Let's give Pack 712, 712, a round of applause. If the pack leaders can join us down front as well. Do a group shot here. One more round of applause for Pack 712. Thank you, gentlemen, and apologies. Tonight, we celebrate Black History Month 2019. We began the month with the Quad County African-American Chamber of Commerce, with Alderman Jenkins, who serves as the chair, and we'll wrap up our month's celebration with what we call the Crowned Event of Black History Month, with the 15th Annual Heritage Dinner of the African-American Heritage Advisory Board. Tonight is the annual proclamation presented by the mayor. But prior to doing the proclamation, we want to honor a number of our young people who are taking the baton and really leading the charge for the next generation of really keeping cultural pride and academic excellence in service at the forefront. Tonight, we begin with a new initiative that Mayor Irving has partnered with Dr. Sobek, Dr. Blacksmith, Dr. Tejada, to put into place at Wobonzi Community College. The college called, they saw a need with their African-American males. Mayor Irvin answered the call. Let's watch a quick video.
So, the Wobonzi, we have an African-American mission that has been in the economy, Wobonzi, they study like a state, the country, the African-American, you know, is finishing higher education. Then the Wobonzi, we want to do something about it. For the last two months, we have been bringing together students and community members to learn what we can do to help them address the obstacles in the way to achieving an education. Today is a very special moment in time, the Wobonzi, because today is the culmination of our African-American, you know, students and community members are coming together to learn from each other and hopefully make a foundation, we'll be long lasting, and we'll help them understand the importance of education and that, yes, the Wobonzi is how they're bringing other colleges and universities. We are working very hard to help these students.
And we all do enough of our community to build relationships with each other to we get to the power, to open the door and support each other.
Chief, you had a part, I remember, you said, tomorrow, the communication's a task for the future, for tomorrow, on the day, I think that's incredible, just to be ready for the future. I feel, yeah, this talk, because we have Wobonzi, it's going to be going to the next level. Respect, that's my huge thing. And I'm very big on that. I want my business, I want to make sure that I make my parents proud.
Do you do the right thing? Just not good. Be a good man. Be a good husband. Respect each other. He talked about respect and trust. Respect each other, respect your wives, respect your girlfriends, respect your... Lift up people, bring them up. You will achieve success in almost anything you do, I guarantee you. Because I, in my high school dropout, with a G, young, sitting here, you know, I'm never believe that someone tells you what you are and who you are and what you're becoming, that that is true. You guys decide your future. You, you alone, you decide your success. You decide your failure.
Round of applause for Wobonzi Community College. All the African-Americans who are stepping up to be those examples, to our communications coordinator, Deacon Constance, for putting together the video. It really sets the stage for what we are attempting to do here in Aurora, to really shadow those stereotypes, to change the narrative across the board. Today, representing Wobonzi Community College and receiving the mayor's commendation, is the Vice President of Student Development. Please welcome Dr. Linda Tejada. Dr. Tejada, is there anything you'd like to share?
Yes, I can just say two words. Unfortunately, between the weather and a basketball game at McHenry, we weren't able to have any of our participants that were on the video tonight. But I really want to thank Mayor Irvin and Mr. Muhammad, as well as members of the city and the community, who joined with us for this initiative, and we are really looking for great things to come of it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. We reached out to a number of our schools, who host either black student unions or African-American student associations, to look at the leadership that's happening with this next generation. Today, we have, representing East Aurora High School, the W.E.B. Du Bois Honor Society, Student Samoa Henry. Come on down, Samoa. We also have Advisor, Ms. Mary Taylor. Come on down, Mary Taylor. Mr. Jaron Yancey. Come on down, Jaron. We represent the W.E.B. Du Bois Honor Society, the Black Student Union at East Aurora High School. Thank you, Mary Taylor. Thank you to Master Chief George Allen, who couldn't be here tonight, as they've led this wonderful new initiative at East Aurora High School. Thank you. Bring it back. We also recognize tonight the Illinois Math and Science Academy, rated as the number one public high school for STEM in the United States of America, and their Black Student Union. Please come down and join us. Cassandra Cusi, Jada Yancey, Tiana Johnson, and Jamia Hamaros. Give them a round of applause. Another round of applause for the ladies and gentlemen. Much like Wobonzi, the work that is being done at Aurora University certainly is trailblazing and groundbreaking, watching the Black Student Initiative grow under Ms. Escartina Irvin, when she came in a couple of years ago, to watch the Black Student Union continue to enhance, has been inspiring. Please join us and welcome the Black Student Union members who are here from Aurora University. Tamara Carter, Samantha Cooper. Give a round of applause. Daniella DeJura. A thousand and a hundred, come on down, ladies. Tia Hartwell, Latte Jones, Amina Muhay, and Christine Williams. Come on down, ladies. Representing the Black Student Union at Aurora University. Join us, joining us also Advisors, Escartina Irvin, Director of Black Student Initiatives, and from the AU Career Services Department, Dionne Robin. Come on down. As we celebrate Black History, it's just as important that we focus on the future as well. We never want to miss the opportunity to shine a light on the next generation of young people. We're going to ask now, if you stay there, ladies, can all the students please come back? I'm sorry. If you come back with your awards, students, come on down. We'll give you a big round of applause. Ladies, come on down to Mary Taylor. Dr. Dan, do you want to come?
Yeah.
Thank you to the AU Communications Department, as well, for being here. We appreciate it. One more round of applause for our student leaders. Lastly, the mayor, as he issues the official proclamation, asking all of you who want to join us, and a number of our staff members who are here, to join us as we acknowledge Black History Month. Before the mayor begins, let me welcome down Kelvin Bean, our Property Standards Manager. Come on down, LaDonna Carr. We can give them a round of applause. Keith Cross, Angel Johnson, Loretta Hall, Linda Jones, Denzel Lee, Tasha Moss, Mike Piggies, David Smith, Sandy Strummer, Nick Thompson, Sarah Walker. Listen, anyone, please, anyone. Our African-American staff members here at the City of Aurora. They're here. And again, we thank our Alderman, our Alderman Large, Sherman L. Jenkins, our Alderman of the National Board, Ed Bug, and the first African-American Alderman to serve on City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Shakita Hartburns.
It is my absolute honor to read this proclamation for Black History Month 2019. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our city, country, and world. And whereas Dr. Carter G. Woodson initiated Negro History Week in February 1926, which was expanded to Black History Month 50 years later during the nation's bicentennial in 1976. And whereas the history of Aurora is fortified with the stories of African-Americans who have helped to shape our community from Reconstruction Era to Great Migration, both World Wars and Civil Rights Era well in contemporary, well into contemporary times. And whereas Aurora has had such African-American trailblazers as Marie Wilkinson, the Matriarch of Aurora, Donald Patterson, the first African-American elected to office in Aurora, serving as county commissioner, Henry Calvert, the first African-American elected to school board, Shakita Hartburns, who stands right here to my left, the first African-American elected to the city council, William Powell, the first African-American Chief of Police, and myself, Richard C. Irvin, the first African-American elected to mayor of Aurora. And we recognize the countless others who have paved and continue to pave the way. And whereas the significant impact of African-Americans in Aurora have been venerated by the naming of five educational institutions, the Marie Wilkinson Center, Winland Brooks Elementary School, Fred Rogers Magnet Academy, Henry Calvert Middle School, and the Dr. Charles Ponquinet Field House at East Aurora High School, and the naming of streets, lakes, businesses, parks, scholarships, awards, and honorary days. And whereas we recognize the contribution of African-Americans have made every day in Aurora by our residents, businesses, and staff throughout our country and across the globe, as we celebrate a bright future where our youth will take the baton and chart new paths, just as leaders of representative student unions in our local high schools, colleges, and universities, and many other organizations are doing right now. And therefore, I, Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of Aurora, do hereby proclaim February as Black History Month in the city of Aurora, and I call upon all residents of Aurora to acknowledge and observe the month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. February, Black History Month. Let's see if we can get us a nice picture, all of us. We got to turn our shoulders that way.
One more round of applause, only. One more round of applause. We have a Cub Scout who's here with us, who puts in hard work. And ironically, today, he's featured in the Aurora Beacon News. He's featured in the Beacon News today because he really goes above and beyond to provide access and positive role models for Aurora. He established the Advisory Program, and this past Saturday, he cut the ribbon for his new mobile computer lab, thirteen computers that travel around to some of our neighborhoods in need to provide direct access to technology for our children. The mayor's commendation, the founder of the Advisory, but also part of our neighborhood group's dean, Mr. David Smith. I know a number of Aldermen worked to support that, so thank you to all who supported and all the community, all the members, all the visiting, all the adults in our firms. Thank you. Alderman Lauchey, David E. Martin.
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, I'll be quick, I'll be quick. I got three minutes, right? No, and it's truly, I mean, it's something to have an idea, and then to have, you know, some great people that stand with you. And I know I'll be in trouble if I don't mention that Alderman Hartburns has been with Advisory from the beginning, and then all, and then I, as I opened up and I added out there, Mike Seville, and, you know, it's a fact, Paul, ain't nothing getting in trouble. So, all of you guys that have been supportive, there's much more work to do, but, I mean, we are now moving into our communities. I mean, I got some pictures that are amazing, and kids are enjoying Town Academy, and it has been great. So I thank you very much for all you've done, and it's amazing what we can do when we come together. And when you brought up One Aurora, One Aurora is how we're going to do that meticulously, is to work together, find that common good, a good common cause that we all can agree on, pull together, and I'm telling you, we can continue to be a successful Aurora every day. So, I thank you guys very much. Thank you.
All right, folks, now we get to our regular portion of the meeting. I know we have some young Cub Scouts here and some other folks that probably have to get home and start dinner and get your night ready, so you can get up and do this again tomorrow. So, at this point, I will go ahead and give you a few minutes to file out, if you choose to leave. If you'd like to stay, we're happy to have you, but I'll give you a few minutes, if you'd like to leave, to go ahead and file out. All right, looks like the folks that have decided to file out have already left, so we will get on to the regular portion of our agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes, with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting. The first speaker tonight is Stephen Hendry.
You can go over that podium there. Mr. Hendry, you have three minutes. Hold on, just one second. Officer, if you want to grab that door for us, so we close. There you go. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Hendry, I'm sorry.
If I go off base, let me know right away. We had our election a while ago, and that was the first one that the King County did instead of the Aurora Election Bureau, which was voted out in a previous election, in a previous ballot. And we were told, we were told, when the, in the competing time, that we're going to be saving, I believe, millions of dollars. If they took it, at least one million dollars. And if I missed the report of that, then direct me to where I can find it. If I didn't miss the report, I'd like to see one that shows how much we saved by changing. I know I was a precinct judge in, for War II, and War VII was also in the same building over at Bonner Church, and I, I walked away, I wasn't going to mess around with it, I thought it was a raw deal. And I went back, when I go back to vote, it's a lot different, the procedures are different, seems to be pretty, pretty straight up, and it was sure nice and easy down at the, for early voting, down at the, where am I? Over there. I think it's over there, the new place. And I just had somebody talk to me about needing their birth certificate, and she's out in Washington, and she needs to get it for something. I said, "Well, you can check with the place in Aurora now, you don't have to mess with the one up in Geneva, there's a satellite place in Aurora." But again, if, if it hasn't been done, I hope it is done soon and brought to everybody's attention on what the results were of this change, and we'll see how the elections go again with the Alderman. And to switch topics, I'm still a strong advocate for doing something else with all these city lots. Whether it be a community garden, whether it be changes to the existing ordinances, whether it's how wide a lot is of sixty feet, or whether it's how many square feet the lot is of six thousand. There's, most of the lots all around me would barely be able to build a house on now. A lot of them are, ours narrow, it's forty-four feet, but some of them are forty-four feet wide, and they're almost seven thousand square feet. So, it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, do you have any additional speakers?
Yes, Mr. Michaela Haberkorn.
Ms. Haberkorn, you have three minutes.
Counsel, thank you. I'm Michaela Haberkorn, I'm the Deputy Director at the Aurora Public Library, and this is with regard to the legislation proposed in the Illinois Senate regarding library governance. I and all of my library colleagues have worked with elected and appointed boards, all of whom work hard to represent their communities. The library has no position on the advantages of an elected versus an appointed board. What's concerning to us is that this legislation was proposed and is being pursued without any, excuse me, without any input from the any, excuse me, without any input from the library administration, the library board, or from the city of Aurora. We would appreciate a call back from Stephanie Kiffowitz's office to discuss this matter. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
Yes, Bonnie Lee Kunkel.
Ms. Kunkel, you have three minutes.
Hello, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. I'm Bonnie Lee Kunkel, and I'm here also out of concern about the library and with interest with regards to Representative Kiffowitz's bill. Well, I understand some concerns that perhaps the bill is not ready for a final vote, I don't think it's intended to be ready for the final vote. And what I'm here today, though, is to say that it's also not time to take a final vote to kill it either. And it seems that that is the position the city has set itself up for at this point in time. Just in case you don't know, the background on this is that there was an effort, albeit quite quiet and under the table, it appeared, to move the West Aurora branch to another location. This met with significant citizen opposition, and I happen to be in the part of town that's affected by this. Complaints were that the process was not transparent, there was not sufficient community input at that point solicited, at least not initially, and there were concerns that it was not the wise decision for the library, not for its users or for its finances. Now, in time, the library did solicit input, input from the community, and I understand the library staff recommended against the move, for which the citizens and the neighbors are very well, very happy. Because another thing that was never discussed was the impact that it would have made on the neighborhood to rip that building out of there and put it somewhere else. But after that drama, and it was significant, and with the referendum that's still pending about that issue, we have then the next thing that comes forward, which is something that normally perhaps would not concern people, but it is that there was a very quick turnover in the replacement of the executive director. And although the citizens had been crying for a transparent process with community input and to be listened to, that didn't happen. So, now, when we have Representative Kiffowitz's bill, and it seems like someone is listening, albeit no one in the west side of town, perhaps maybe not in the Fifth Ward, where the library is, is, is located, and I don't mean nobody, I mean the people who could make a difference. But then we have the city of Aurora tomorrow morning speaking against the Kiffowitz's bill and asking that it be turned down before it's ever finessed, before it's ever heard. I call upon each one of you here, and in particular on Carl Franco, the Alderman for the Fifth Ward, to rescind that slip by the city in opposition to that bill and to let it continue through the process so we could be heard. Thank you.
Clerk, is there any, are there any additional speakers?
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I actually would like to take the opportunity to speak on a letter that I received, and I'll read the letter then make comments from the letter. It was dated January twenty-third, 2019, and it reads, "Dear Mayor Irvin, on Tuesday, January twenty-second, I was at the Aurora City Council meeting. I know you, and I know you as a person have volunteered with youth of our city for many years. Scores of youth look up to you as a role model. In that capacity and elsewhere, I am sure you always discourage not listening to others. I was shocked last Tuesday to hear you be disrespectful to Alderman Loftie during the discussion about the Special Events Department. Just as I have, just as I have First Amendment rights and can sign up to speak at city council meeting without being interrupted, so the Aldermen on our city council have those same First Amendment rights. It saddened me deeply to hear you speak to Alderman Loftie like that, or to speak anyone like that. And it should not be tolerated anywhere in our city government. As our mayor, you should set the standard and never be disrespectful to anyone. You owe Alderman Loftie an apology. Signed, Mary Ann Vincent. Oak Leaf Court in Aurora." Well, I just have to say that I absolutely agree with Ms. Vincent, and because she sent me this letter, and the incidents that she referred to happened in a public setting, I wanted to make sure that I addressed this in the same public setting. This was, I believe, two weeks ago at, at city council. And there was a conversation that, between myself and Alderman Loftie while city council was going on, and I have to say that I agree with Ms. Vincent. I was short and disrespectful to Alderman Loftie and did not allow him the opportunity to speak. And I want to say publicly, as I made these statements publicly, I want to say publicly to Alderman Loftie that I apologize. You know, I, I do believe as mayor that I have a standard that I have to maintain in a, a certain professionalism and decorum that I have to keep at this city council. And I have to do that in communicating with all of our Aldermen. And I won't lie, you know, this is something that I'll be working on, you know, the rest of my time as, as mayor, as I try to work on improving myself as a person all the time. And I, I also won't lie that I, you know, I believe that the way that Alderman Loftie and I have spoken with each other, since we both, since I started as mayor and he started as an Alderman of the Tenth Ward, it has frustrated me greatly. But my frustration that I have is not his problem, that's my problem as mayor to, to overcome that and to learn how to communicate with Alderman Loftie or any Alderman effectively so we can move this city forward. That gentleman is the Alderman of the Tenth Ward elected by his citizens to represent their interests, and he cert, and he holds a place on this council to represent the interest of the city of Aurora. And although I may not agree with him, and I'm sure there will be plenty of times I won't, I should still respect him or any Alderman on this, on this city council and their opinion and what they have to say. And again, I won't say that I won't get frustrated again in the future, but, you know, I will work on being the best possible mayor I can be in allowing all of our Aldermen the opportunity to, to speak and be heard. So I want to publicly apologize, apologize Alderman Loftie. I expect, I expect that I probably have been a little short with many Aldermen, and if I have, I apologize in going forward. I hope we can all work together, you know, to just move this city forward. And I'll say this, you know, I was elected out of all the folks that ran for mayor based on the vision that I had to, to create, you know, a better city for all of us. So, my job is to have the overarching vision and to have my staff try to make that vision come true along with the assistance of the Aldermen in each of their wards and both Aldermen at large, I said on the immediate right and left of me. So, you know, I would ask that, that, that we all work to make this vision reality. You know, I, I've been thinking about this, being mayor and doing a good job in this position for the last twenty years, so I've got a lot to add to, you know, that lot in this vision and, and this concept I want, that I, I had to move Aurora forward. So I'd appreciate any support from the Aldermen and hope that we can continue to work together as a team for the city of Aurora. Thank you. Now let's go on to mayoral appointments. Clerk, can you read the first item under mayor appointment?
Item nineteen dash zero zero two four, a resolution appointing Dr. Simone Lewis and Hortensia Ramos and reappointing Susan Sosa Bachmeier to the Aurora Human Relations Commission.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no questions, Clerk, please call a rule.
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Loftie?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A, zero NAs.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. I see Ms. Ramos in the room. Is Ms. Lewis present? Oh, we got both of them, can you both stand up? All right, be recognized, thank you very much. For your willingness to serve. Can you read the next item?
Item nineteen dash zero zero four-two, a resolution appointing Marjorie Logman, Jonathan Mansma, and Terry Voitick, and reappointing Bernina Perkins, Carol Riley, Karen Juan, and Mavis Bates to Sustainable Aurora, the Mayor's Sustainable Aurora Advisory Board. Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any question or discussions regarding the resolution? There being no further questions, Clerk, please call a rule.
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Loftie?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A, zero NAs.
Motion carries, resolution is approved. Do we have Ms. Logman, I saw earlier, Ms. Mansma, Ms. Voitick, Bernina Perkins, Carol Riley, Ms. Juan, Ms. Bates? You guys want to stand up if you can, and we see you over there. All right, thank you very much. For your willingness to serve, appreciate it. All right, Clerk, can you call the next item?
Item nineteen dash zero zero seven-seven, a resolution appointing Sandra Alvarez and Randy Fisher to the Aurora Veterans Advisory Council.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns, seconded by Alderman Jenkins. Are there any question or discussions regarding the resolution? There being none, will Clerk please call a rule?
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Loftie?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A, zero NAs.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Do we have David Mertz, Sean Thomas, or Gary Kreenitz? That's the chief of the fire department. Do we have any other ones here in the room?
Chief is here.
Fire department, he already was here, well, let's give them a round of applause for their willingness to serve. Everybody on all the boards we just mentioned that stood up and got applause, will you please meet me down front? I would like to take a picture with you if I can. All right, I'll give the few minutes, folks, a few minutes to file out before we go on to the rest of the agenda. All right, looks like the folks that have left, folks that are staying are the ones that are gonna stay, and everybody that is interested in leaving has vacated the premises. So at this point, will Clerk now please read the consent agenda in full?
Item eighteen dash one one three zero, resolution to ratify payment to Holian asbestos removal and encapsulation of Spring Grove, Illinois for removal and hollow waste asbestos and lead tainted materials from Old Fire Station Seven. Item eighteen dash one one three seven, a resolution to purchase a used 2016 Ford F-550 hybrid aerial bucket truck from Altech Industries as a sole source for ninety-eight thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and zero cents. Item eighteen dash eleven fifty-three, a resolution ratifying payment to Eurofin Scientific for laboratory analytical services provided in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars during calendar year 2018 for the Water Production Division. Item eighteen dash eleven seventy-one, a resolution authorizing the purchase of nine replacement vehicles for the city of Aurora fleet. Item nineteen dash zero zero sixteen, a resolution to authorize a professional services agreement for professional engineering consultation services for a citywide potable water system capacity analysis for the Water Production Division. Item nineteen dash zero zero eighteen, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one Zoll X Series cardiac monitor defibrillator and accessories using the Silver Cross Purchasing Cooperative in the amount of thirty-one thousand fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents for the Aurora Fire Department from Zoll Medical Corporation. Item nineteen dash zero zero twenty-one, a resolution to purchase one E1 fifteen-hundred gallon per minute fire engine from Fire Service Incorporated of St. John, Indiana for five-hundred sixty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and zero cents. Item nineteen dash zero zero two-two, a resolution authorizing the purchase of five Zoll Auto-Pulse automated CPR devices and accessories using the Silver Cross Purchasing Cooperative in the amount of seventy-six thousand six hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents for the Aurora Fire Department from Zoll Medical Corporation. Item nineteen dash zero zero two-six, a resolution ratifying payment to Builder's Paving LLC for a change order in conjunction with the paving of the East Ramp Parking Lot Project located at the Aurora Municipal Airport in the amount of twenty-three thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Item nineteen dash zero zero three-zero, resolution authorizing the Ward One Business Grant Program with current guidelines. Item nineteen dash zero zero three-one, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class G City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Two Brothers Roundhouse Incorporated doing business as Two Brothers Roundhouse located at 205 North Broadway. Item nineteen dash zero zero three-two, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class E City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from Two Brothers Roundhouse Incorporated doing business as Two Brothers Roundhouse located at 205 North Broadway. Item nineteen dash zero zero three-four, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class A City of Aurora liquor licenses unofficially related to application from La Mono Corporation doing business as Levy Karaoke and Barbecue, 4436 in the East New York Street, Aurora.
Are there any motions? There's been a motion by Alderman Hardburns and a second by Alderman Jenkins to approve. However, before we go forward, are there any questions or motions to remove any items from the consent agenda? Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Loftie.
I just have a question on eighteen one one three seven, I just noticed, it says sole source, and I'm, I'm just not sure, don't we have to bid out trucks? I mean, unless it's part of a cooperative or something?
Is there someone from staff that can answer that question?
I'm sorry, could I have that number?
Sure, eighteen one one three seven, the 2016 Ford F-550 hybrid aerial bucket truck.
Actually, this would be a sole source because in this case we, we are purchasing it used, so we don't have a list of comparison of similar vehicles, so when the Finance Committee reviewed it, we do compare it to other vehicles that would be purchased new. So in this case, that vehicle was approximately a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars new. The Finance Committee reviewed new purchase prices compared to this sole source of a used vehicle. We'll be doing something similar. Today, we also had a used tub grinder, which is a five-hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment that has a new price of one million dollars for the Public Works Division. So we are, it's also, you can find these wherever you can, and then it becomes a sole source, no one else has. No one else has that vehicle used at that price. So there's no ability to say, I would like to go out and do a bid for a used vehicle. And that's the logic. I suppose we could do a bid for that, but in this case, what we've done is check the prices on used, I mean, on new vehicles, and said, we have an alternative to a competitively priced new vehicle, and we wish to buy used.
So just for clarification, you're saying anytime we buy something new, used, that we have, that we normally have to bid, we don't have to go out to bid?
We have not done that.
Counsel?
And Mr. Mayor, in general cases, and with respect to government procurement, generally speaking, the purchase of used equipment is a recognized circumstance which is not suitable for competitive bidding because of the uniqueness of the quality of the product.
And just say that one more time.
With respect to government procurement, the purchase of used equipment is generally recognized as an exception to the normal competitive bidding rule because by its very nature, a piece of used equipment is not suitable for competitive bidding. It probably may be more correct to refer to it as a situation unsuitable for bidding as opposed to a sole source, even though it is also effectively the only place you'd be able to purchase that particular item because of use.
I would change the term to single source, and we will. We also did this for the airport last year. We had a major piece of equipment that we purchased, a very large tractor at approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand instead of double that. So staff is trying to keep the cost of the purchasing down. As we all know, when it comes to purchasing equipment, your biggest year of depreciation is the first year. So in the case of the one that Alderman reviewed today, we have a machine that has only ten percent of its hours used at half price. So that's, we feel is a good use of funds. And again, staff did go out and get pricing on new equipment of similar specifications.
Any additional questions on that particular item? Any additions or questions or interest of removal of any other items on the consent agenda? All right, having a motion and a second already on the floor, are there any other questions generally? There being no other questions, will clerk, please call the rule.
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lopshy?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nace.
Motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. Clerk, can you read the first item under unfinished business?
Item nineteen dash zero zero four-nine, introduction of public hearing to be held on February twelfth, twenty nineteen for the creation of Tax Increment Finance District Number Nine.
I call the public hearing on the proposed Downtown Tax Increment Finance Financing District Number Nine, Stope Avenue Downtown Aurora to order. By city mayor, the public hearing is being held as required by Section Five A of the Illinois Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, sixty-five ILCS five slash eleven dash seventy-four point four dash five A. Notice of the hearing was mailed and published in the newspaper and required by law. The purpose of the hearing is for city council to consider the creation of TIF District Nine and for the public to offer comments to the city council about the creation of TIP District Nine. The overview of the proposed Downtown Tax Increment Financing District Nine, Stope Avenue Downtown area and the eligibility study and the redevelopment plan and project in relation thereto. I now ask the city staff and its consultants to give the city council an overview of TIP District Nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The city staff will handle this, given the current state of the weather outside Kane. Montana is not present. However, I, and I'm also not going to go through an entire PowerPoint, but give a overview of TIF Number Nine. That is sufficient for the public hearing. We did introduce the first ordinance today at the Finance Committee, removing certain parcels from TIF Number One, which is the first step in creating TIF Number Nine. So this TIF, TIF Number Nine, as many of you may know, is bordered by Galena on the north, the river on the east, Stope on the west, and Downer on the south. So it is a one-block TIF composed mainly of the Paramount Theater and the Keystone Building and a few buildings just to the south. So a very small TIF that was originally contemplated and recommended by the council, not approved when the ACCA Paramount Development was originally approved. TIF Nine is important as a part of the ACCA Paramount Agreement. It's listed as one of the funding mechanisms associated with the agreement. So in bringing a TIF forward, it has to meet all of the, not all of it, it has to meet a minimum of three criteria under state statute for qualifying for a TIF, under economic eligibility. And this TIF, in fact, meets five of those criteria. And I, and I've already referenced that. The five criteria that it does meet are lagging and declining, assessed valuation, excessive vacancies. Remember, this would be prior to the ACCA Paramount Development, so in the whole, in that one block, excessive vacancies qualified, deterioration, lack of community planning, and obsolescence of the structures. So it did qualify of five out of thirteen, needing three. The process that we have had, in November, we announced that we were going to create the TIF. In December, the Joint Review Board met December seventeenth. That body unanimously recommended that the TIF be created and created the rest of this schedule. We provided the council in the past, and we again have available a budget for this TIF of thirteen point three million dollars. That budget should not be seen as something we're going to spend in the next two to three years. That is a twenty-three-year budget for this TIF. So it includes such things as land acquisition, which is unlikely in that TIF, of one million dollars, but up to eight million dollars in building rehab. So as many of you may know, we're going to be talking about a development project in the TIF, and that project, which is going to take up a bulk of the TIF, will not involve eight million dollars worth of expenses. So we will be well within the budget for this TIF, at least as concerned over the next ten years. Who can say ten years from now whether or not redevelopment could happen or a different use might happen? So our next steps for this TIF is that we've had the public hearing tonight. We introduced the ordinance, removing properties in the Finance Committee that will come to the council on February twenty-sixth, and then on March twelfth, we will actually have the ordinance for final approval and adoption of TIF Nine. Can you answer any questions?
Hold on just one second. I now ask the city staff to provide the city council with information about the Joint Review Board proceeding regarding TIF District Number Nine.
The Joint Review Board, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself, Mr. Mayor. It did meet on December seventeenth. The Joint Review Board receives the budget, receives the eligibility report. We review the proposed TIF in detail, members of school district, county, any specialty districts, or all members of this board as well as a resident member. And they did vote unanimous to recommend, remember, this body does not have an approval authority, it recommends to the council whether or not to approve a TIF or not. And they unanimously recommended to approve the TIF.
Are there any members of the public who wish to address the city council regarding this matter? If so, step forward and make your comment at this time. Is there anyone willing to address the council? Does anyone want to speak? All right, there's been motion. Are there any questions or comments from the city council? Alderman Lopshy?
So Marty, you said that, can you explain what the Joint Review Board is? I have never heard that.
The Joint Review Board is a body created by statute under the TIF Act that is composed of all the taxing bodies who would appear on a tax bill for the properties within the TIF. And the, every taxing body is allowed to send a, one voting member to the Joint Review Board, and then the meeting is held every year to analyze how a TIF is performing. So TIFs that are in place, every year it must have a Joint Review Board meeting, and if any new TIF is proposed, then the prospective members or those members that would be on the Joint Review Board are also informed, and they must come together and vote to recommend or not recommend the TIF. It is not a binding recommendation, but it is a, and it is a public meeting, so it is noticed and it is open to the public.
So the most, the one who has the most stake in this is the schools?
Yes.
So did the school board, are they recommending?
Yes.
They recommended, okay. And then you said there's a budget for this?
Yes.
I know I can't get it because I'm not in the Finance Committee. You said you presented to Finance Committee, correct?
The TIF budget, and I will go back and look to see what was in the original packet, but it will come to you next week when the actual document is presented for the council to review for the twenty-sixth. So I, I'm happy to meet with you and show it to you in advance. It is a nine-line budget, thereabouts composed of various major broadband expenditure delineations according to the act. So you outline all of the eligible expenses within the district and set a budget to it, knowing that, or trying to estimate what you might spend in those various lines over a full twenty-three-year period. Because if you do not, you must come back to the Government Board and go through an amendment process and through the Joint Review Board to amend a budget.
So there were thirteen properties identified in the ordinance, but now there's five? There's only five?
The five, that was referred to, the categories that must be met for an area to be deemed TIF eligible.
No, but, so, so all thirteen of these PIN numbers are in the TIF, and that hasn't been changed? Maybe I just misunderstood.
Where are you referring to PIN numbers?
Well...
What we have, what will be a part of the documents that you'll see will be a legal description that next, at the twenty-sixth, you'll see a legal description for TIF One prior to TIF Nine being removed, then a legal description for the proposed TIF Nine, and then a new TIF One proposed legal description without the TIF Nine properties in it. So that's how we, that's how you handle the actual description of the TIF, as well as a map showing the border of the TIF that I described verbally to you. If it were to help, I can put up a slide that would show it.
But on page three of this, Exhibit A one, it lists all the properties. I'm just, it's from, so it's from Downer to Stope to Galena to the river?
Correct.
Okay.
It is a, again, it's what we will be bringing forward to the council. It is an example of a micro TIF, and the reason, I did not go into it, but it is something we have talked about. The reason we're able to do this is that this TIF falls below a de minimis level of the value of TIF One. So it meets, we have a legal opinion from Kleintor and Jenkins that states, TIF Nine is not a big enough part of TIF One to endanger the mission of TIF One, so we may remove it from TIF One and start a new small TIF, literally inside the old one, for a specific purpose, and as long as it's eligible, but start a new twenty-three-year clock. And again, all the board members on the Joint Review Board understood this. I would say it's, and we can discuss this, but this helps preserve the fact that they will end up in the year twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, getting their larger tax increment that they've waited those now thirty-five years, because TIF One was extended twelve years. So they will, by doing it this way, we will allow the school to get potentially new funding and also get their old funding from the TIF One as we close it in twenty-twenty-two.
Alderman Mervine?
On the, on the Joint Review Board, were all of the potential members that were supposed to be there in terms of the different taxing bodies, were they all represented at the final, at the final vote?
I don't have the attendance with me. I do know that you had the city, the county, and the school, which would make up about ninety-five percent of the bill. So the, we did, oh, and also the Park District? And the Park District. So we had a majority of, a very large majority of everyone represented. A quorum is not required by statute. It is, you hold the meeting, and if no one comes, you have held the meeting. But...
Everyone was given notice?
Yes, oh yes. And they're allowed to substitute anybody that they would like from administration to attend or an elected official if they so choose.
That's fine, I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other Aldermen have any other questions? There is a motion to close the public, adjourn the public hearing made by Alderman Hartburn. Is there a second? Then a second by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
All right.
All right, the public hearing is hereby closed. All right, and we go on to the next item under unfinished business, clerk.
Item eighteen dash ten sixteen, a resolution for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and zero cents from NTI National Technologies, thirteen fifty West Washington Street, West Chicago, Illinois, six zero one eight five, to extend the City of Aurora's fiber optic cable plant from the southwest side of Deal Road at Eola Road to the southeast side of Deal Road at Eola Road. The pricing is based on Kane County bid twenty-three dash zero one eight, fiber optics support services awarded on June twelfth, twenty eighteen.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution? There's been a motion by Alderman Jenkins, seconded by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? Alderman Mervine?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I had questions about this as we, as we went along, most notably that the objectives seemed to kind of be fluid a little bit. I had an opportunity over the weekend to check on one of those objectives again, the one that I hadn't checked on so far, and found that was, in particular, that was the one to be able to connect with Naperville and, you know, provide a redundant connection. So I've satisfied my, my questions about that at this point and agree that it's a necessary item at this point. However, I think we, I think we need, we need to, we need to clear up, clean up how all this gets, gets moved forward in the future, so.
Any other, I'm sorry, who's that? Was that Alderman O'Connor? Sorry.
Speak louder. Mr. Mayor. I wanted to comment that this is a subject that's been with us for a while now, and as I commented last week at the Finance Committee meeting, I think it, it developed into a sense of just, we're trying to do our responsibility and are trying to work on our part from this city council and particularly through the form of the Finance Committee, that we simply had some issues that we wanted to talk about, and I think Alderman Mervine is referring to the fact that we really wanted to understand better as to our part of the work done and how it related to the continuum of On Light in regard to the entire topic of the fiber optic. And we got some answers, and I think we had some good discussions, but I think we don't have all of the answers yet. But we do have the understanding that we're going to pursue really a very candid and direct conversation in regard to what to do better to relate the work of On Light and the work of the city in regard to this area. And I have that commitment from the, from the mayor that this will occur as we, as we move on, because I think we better define our, our working together and our responsibilities. We also just wanted to emphasize again that none of us on this council are afraid of more information and more paper or more, I'm still in the paper age, more information that's available for us to be able to make our decisions. And I think that's what extends sometimes the discussion. I know that very hard work is done on behalf of the staff in, in working on developing this and prepping it and bringing it forward to us and explaining it to us, and that's in every department. But that still remains the fact that if we have additional concerns, if we have more information that's needed, that we're just simply going to pursue that. We don't want to interrupt that, but we do want the feeling on our part of whether, whatever committee it is that all of us work on, that we've made the best decisions, we've made the best recommendations on what we have had presented to us. So I do appreciate the fact that we continue talking about this. We made some progress, we've made some efforts in order to have a fuller understanding and we need to continue to do that, which will occur, and I will also support this at this point. The issue of providing that available for, for coming on to it by other businesses, the redundancy, the solving of the redundancy situation, that's very, very important, I think, and so we should proceed with this.
Any other Alderman have any comments, concerns? No other questions, can the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville? Alderman? Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Love?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nades.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Let's go on to new business, is there a motion to suspend the rules to consider items under new business? Section of the agenda, there's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Jenkins. The clerk please call the roll.
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco? Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Love?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nades.
Motion carries, clerk, can you read the first item under new business?
Item nineteen dash zero zero one one, a resolution authorizing the destruction of certain closed session recordings.
There's been a motion by Alderman Jenkins, second by Alderman Hartburns. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this particular resolution? There being no questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos? Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco? Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Love?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nades.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved, clerk, can you read the next item under new business?
Item nineteen dash zero zero four zero, resolution considering the review of closed executive session minutes.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Jenkins, are there any questions or discussion regarding this resolution? There being no questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Love?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nades.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Is there a motion to accept and file the Corporate Fund Investment Report? There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Jenkins, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote, is there a motion to approve and pay the bills, is listed on the agenda? There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Bowman. Are there any questions or discussions on the bills? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Bowman?
Yes.
Alderman Mesiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denal?
Yes.
Alderman Franco? Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns? Alderman Mervine?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Love? Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Eleven A zero nades.
Motion carries, the bills are approved. There being no further business to come before the City Council, there's been a motion by Alderman Hartburns to adjourn, second by Alderman Jenkins, all those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is hereby adjourned.